List, we are also kind of content creators. What was your takeaway from doing this series?
Yeah, you know, I guess I felt both recognition and unease. I absolutely understand way better now why young people are drawn or feel they have to be part of the creator economy. You can be independent, you can express yourself, and sometimes there's a paycheck there that they just cannot get somewhere else. And if AI does indeed decimate the traditional job market, as some tech analysts are predicting, it might be their only option going forward. But I have to say, there's something a little depressing about every creative act passing through an attention optimized algorithm. Maybe that makes me an old, you know, or a hypocrite because, you know, I'm on Instagram and I write a Substack as well as public radio. So like, that line between media and journalism and the creator economy keeps getting more blurry. So I guess the challenge for us, I think, is figuring out how to live and work in both worlds with integrity.
Yeah, and also to respect creativity as this beautiful thing.
Yes.
Manoush Zomorodi hosts NPR's TED Radio Hour. You can listen to the show's two-part series on the creator economy wherever you get your podcasts and on your local station. Thanks for being here, Manoush.
It was my pleasure.
You're listening to Here and Now.
Hi, it's Steve Inskey.
And I'm Mary Louise Kelly. You may have heard that prices for used vehicles are up. That car you've been thinking about donating to this station?
That car could be worth hundreds of dollars or even more in support.
If you don't need it, donate it. It's easy, it's free to you, and the proceeds help us bring you the news.
Learn more on this station's website.
Go to radioiq.org and click the Support tab and select Vehicle Donation.
Three years ago, Iranian police arrested a young woman for not wearing her hijab in public. She died in custody. Today, thousands of women across the country are openly defying the law despite the risks.
This new generation realized that there is no way to reform this regime, and they decided to leave whatever they want. They are more brave than us, and they are paying for the expenses.
That's on the next On Point.
Tune in weekdays at 7 for On Point.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and MathWorks, creator of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Citiespace Productions, WBUR's creative studio for custom podcasts that tell a brand's story to ignite engagement, reach new audiences, or establish thought leadership.
It's Here and Now. Homeless services providers are bracing for a massive shakeup in federal funding, one they say could push more than 100,000 people back onto the streets. The Department of Housing and Urban Development plans deep cuts to long-term housing and instead will ramp up short-term programs that require work and addiction treatment. NPR National Correspondent Jennifer Ludden joins me now for more on this. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, Jane.
So tell us more here. What exactly is the change that HUD is now rolling out?
So there are a lot of policy changes it's making, but a key focus is on chronic homelessness, you know, especially people living outside many for years. And this will dramatically shift the way the agency spends about $4 billion to help them. In recent years, most, nearly 90% of that money, has gone to help move people into permanent housing, where they are offered help for addiction treatment, mental health counseling, help getting jobs. But now HUD is going to slash that kind of funding by two-thirds and instead spend money on more transitional housing. And it's also going to favor programs that require people to work or enter treatment for mental health problems or substance abuse. Now HUD officials say the idea is to encourage self-sufficiency and address the root causes of homelessness.
Okay. I want to hear more about the reaction to this, but first, can you say a little bit more about how the agency expects this shift to play out?
Right. So for some context here, this is part of a building conservative backlash that has basically blamed current record-high levels of homelessness on this focus on permanent housing. It's a policy called Housing First. It's long had bipartisan support. I spoke with Devin Kurtz at the Cicero Institute, a conservative think tank that's been making this case for a while and has helped advise the Trump administration. He argues that allowing formerly homeless people to stay in federally subsidized housing for years and years with no preconditions is a failure of the system.
Ideally, we get a certain portion of the population that I would say is overhoused, that actually should be moving on to more levels of independence, but wouldn't because why would you leave? Hopefully, we're able to free up units by people exiting the system entirely.
So the idea there is with the shift to transitional housing is government help is temporary, it is not forever.
So this does sound like a major overhaul. What do advocates for ending homelessness say about this?
They say it makes no sense. And the whole point of permanent housing is to end homelessness because, as they see it, the main root cause of homelessness is a severe lack of affordable housing. And they also say that forcing people into treatment doesn't work. The US did try that for many years. And they point to research that finds this Housing First policy is pretty effective at keeping people off the streets. I spoke with Stephanie Klaske-Gamer. She has LA family housing in Los Angeles. They house thousands of people who were chronically homeless, all have some kind of disabling condition. And she says it's just not realistic to think they could all get a job that would pay enough to rent on the open market. She's really worried her organization is going to lose its federal funding.
True devastation. We are going to see it on our streets. We're going to see it on our own staffs, like faces, with people just showing up at the door, and we don't have the resources to give them.
You know, Klaske-Gamer says, hey, if the administration wanted to just add on some more short-term housing, great, but don't do it at the expense of long-term housing. And she says there's not nearly enough transitional housing or treatment programs right now for this sudden shift HUD wants to make. One national advocacy group estimates that this whole overhaul could put up to 170,000 people at risk of losing housing again.
So just so I'm clear, could these permanent housing programs change to become transitional housing? That seems to be the government's aim here.
That is exactly what Devin Kurtz at the Cicero Institute says they should do, but Klaske-Gamer and others tell me it's not feasible and not even legal by definition. They say people in permanent housing don't even qualify for transitional services because they're no longer considered homeless. So not at all clear how that would work. And so Klaske-Gamer says you just cannot flip a switch and make it something else.
Finally, Jen, you said earlier that beyond this shift in funding, HUD is making a lot of policy changes. Tell us what else is happening.
Until now, a big part of this HUD funding has gone to keeping existing projects going. You know, they were fairly assured they could get more funding to keep doing what they're doing, but that's now going to be capped at just 30%. HUD says it wants new players at the table. That's going to include more faith-based groups, and so a lot of places will not have funding renewed. And also HUD is now going to favor places and programs that comply with the Trump administration's policy agenda. So for example, its support for homeless camping bans, or its opposition to DEI and transgender rights. The administration basically is going to use its leverage over homelessness funding to force communities to adopt other parts of its agenda.
So then what happens next here, Jen?
You know, next up is going to be a real scramble as groups around the country start to apply for this funding and figure out who is qualified to apply, given these new restrictions and parameters. And government officials at HUD had no answer when they were asked, what's going to happen in the interim? What does that mean if people are going to lose their current housing? That is a big, open-ended question.
That's NPR's Jennifer Ludden. Jen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Jane Clayson in Boston.
And I'm Alyssa Adworny in Washington DC. You're listening to Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station, and BetterHelp, committed to helping clients with issues ranging from relationship challenges and goal setting to grief and depression. Learn more at betterhelp.com-public.
At any given moment, there are thousands of people listening to this station across the Commonwealth of Virginia. You could have your business, organization, or event mentioned to all of those smart and engaged people. You'll also be helping to support all the news, stories, and music you hear on public media every day. Find out how to become a corporate sponsor by emailing us at wvtfcorporatesupport@vt.edu.
This week on This American Life, there's a spot in Mackenzie and Isabella's house that's perfect for eavesdropping on their parents.
Good afternoon and welcome to the 2 o'clock PM session of Roanoke City Council on Monday, November 17, 2025. City council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through YouTube Live at youtube.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. This time, I'll invite our clerk, Ms. McCoy, to please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Hagan. He's out. Ms. Sanchez-Jones, out. Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Nash.
Here.
And Mayor Cobb.
Here. And a quorum is present. This afternoon, I'll be leading our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance, so I invite you to stand, please. I've been thinking a lot about African-American theologian Howard Thurman, who was actually ordained in Roanoke, Virginia, at First Baptist Church, Gainesboro. And so this afternoon, I'd like to offer a blessing written by Reverend Howard Thurman. "Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace. Teach me how to order my days, that with your touch I may say the right word at the right time and in the right way, lest I betray the spirit of peace. Let me not be deceived by my own insecurity and weakness, which would make me hurt another, as I try desperately to help myself. Keep watch with me, O God, over the days of my life, that with abiding enthusiasm I may be in such possession of myself, that each day I may offer to thee the full, unhampered use of me, in all my parts, as an instrument of thy peace." Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. To apply for one of those boards or commissions, you can access the city's website at www.roanokeva.gov to complete an online application. Roanoke City Council is also accepting nominations for the 2025 Citizen of the Year. Think about someone you know who goes above and beyond to make our community a better place, and this is an opportunity to recognize them. To view the nomination criteria and complete a nomination form, you can visit roanokeva.gov/citizenoftheyear or stop by the city clerk's office, which is on this floor, just down the hall, for additional information as well as an application. All nominations must be submitted by 5:00 PM on Friday, November 21, 2025, and all nominees must be a resident of the City of Roanoke. This time, we'll move into our presentations and acknowledgements. And as we do at our 2 o'clock meetings, we begin with council shout-outs, so I'll turn to my colleagues to share some things that they want to shout out about our city since we last met. So Ms. Powers, I'll start with you.
Thank you. My shout-out is to a couple of places. First of all, I want to shout out to the entire Roanoke City employees for all the work that you do, especially this time I'm seeing them, you know, picking up those leaves, dealing with downed trees, and they're just always Johnny on the spot. My other is, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting called Strong Towns. I was so impressed with this group, a group of young individuals trying to understand our city, wanting to understand how the budget works, how to read the budget. It was just so warming to be there with that group. So keep up your good work, Strong Towns, you've got a great group of people there, and I look forward to being invited back. Thank you.
My council shout-out is a little bit late, but it's, we didn't have council before the last election, and so I want to thank all of our election workers and poll workers who went out on that day. It was a very busy day. And I thank everybody who went out and rode the bus for free, or who also went out and made their voice heard in the election. So thank you to all the poll workers.
I'll say thank you to our city staff as well. I was driving, you know, and I don't even know if it's really city staff that put up the Christmas tree, because I was driving past, going to our council offices this morning, and I was going by Nolan Plaza, and I saw them putting the tree up. And I said, one, that thing's a big tree, and if it falls over, like, someone getting hurt. But, but, but yeah, definitely shout out to all of our staff, as they prepare to make, you know, Roanoke continue to look good. Those were holidays.
Yeah, so the wreaths are up, are starting to be up on the lights, so starting to be magical.
Both of my brothers already have their Christmas trees up, too, and I usually wait until after Thanksgiving, but I'm feeling the pressure this year. I want to give a shout-out to two groups this weekend. I had the chance to get a tour of the soft opening of the Harrison Museum of African-American Culture over at Melrose Plaza, and I really enjoyed that. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to that plaza and the neighborhood. The grand opening is in February for Black History Month 2026. So shout out to everyone, the staff there and the board that are working to make that a reality. And then the next day, on Sunday, I went out with the JB's crew, Jack Brown's crew from Jack Brown's Downtown, teamed up with iHeart Southeast and the Pluckers, and we picked up a lot of trash around the Tinker Creek Greenway and around Indian Village for a couple hours and had a great time doing that. So shout out to everyone out there helping clean up their neighborhoods.
Thank you. So just to add to something that Councilman Volason said about Election Day Fair Free Service, we actually saw an increase in ridership of over 1,400 people that day related to that Fair Free Service. And I want to thank the City of Roanoke and Virginia Tech for their partnership on a program called Grant Ready Roanoke. Nine local nonprofit organizations at various levels of growth and development were able to participate in Grant Ready Roanoke to build capacity, and I was able to attend their graduation, if you will, ceremony about a week ago, and it was wonderful to see how the seed of an idea is becoming a nonprofit and making a profound difference in the life of the community. So again, thanks to our folks from the city, as well as Virginia Tech for helping to make that happen, and to the nine nonprofit organizations who are doing great work. So next, it's my honor to turn to our city manager for a couple of presentations today, recognitions, and Ms. Turner, I will turn to you to offer those presentations.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. I'd like to invite Heather Fay to the podium. So I want you to join me once again in celebrating Ms. Fay's contribution, this time as Virginia's 2025 America's SBDC Star, State Star. Just as past August, we proudly announced Heather's new role as Executive Regional Administrator of the Small Business Development Center team. And in September, her selection as Virginia's State Star further affirmed what we already knew. Heather is dedicated, she's a visionary, and deeply committed leader. With advanced degrees from Capella University and William Woods University, and a proven track record at the Virginia SBDC, Heather has consistently championed small business success across the greater Roanoke and New Valley regions. Her prior role in economic development, regional technology, and higher education reflect a career built on service, collaboration, and community impact. We are incredibly proud of her and the work, and we are honored to celebrate her on this national stage and look forward to her continued contribution, innovation, and passion that she continues to bring to the City of Roanoke. Congratulations.
I was going to say, surely you are not speechless.
You all know me too well. Thank you so much, Ms. Turner, for those kind remarks. It is an honor and privilege to serve in a leadership role. I brought my team along with me, so I cannot do the work that I did previously as the Regional Program Director and Business Advisor without Jeff Robertson and Anthony Grassi, if you all will stand, and Tom Tanner, and our previous director, Amanda Forrester, who's now the Director of Marketing for the Virginia. After a special moment, so thank you for the opportunity to do that. It's an honor and a privilege.
Congratulations.
And before she sits, I'm going to...
Ms. Turner, I think we want to get a photo of Heather first.
And for the next presentation, I'm going to ask Ms. Fay. I'm going to call in her to recognize our veteran Small Business of the Year.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm going to ask Tom Tanner, who's our Vet Biz Coordinator, to join me, who, Tom is an Army veteran and proudly leads our Vet Biz program, and so I'm going to turn the podium over to Tom.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, members of the City Council and staff. I'm Tom Tanner, Business Advisor and Veteran Program Coordinator with the Greater Roanoke Valley and NVRV Business Development Center. I'm here to honor, to introduce the 2025 winner of the Small Business Development Center Small Business Veteran of the Year Award. This particular award is presented by the Virginia Small Business Development Center Network, recognize veterans who have made significant contributions to the economy through ownership of a Virginia small business, but has also made a significant difference in their communities by promoting a sense of duty and voluntarism. The winner of the regional award goes on to compete for the Virginia Small Business Veteran of the Year Award. This year's recipient, Curtis Jokim, exemplifies that spirit through the incredible journey as the founder and CEO of the Jokim Group. This is a service-disabled veteran-owned small business and certified public accounting firm headquartered right here in Roanoke City. After serving nine years on active duty with the US Marine Corps, his business began in 2006 as a one-person practice with $1,400 in revenue, which has now grown into a thriving, multimillion-dollar firm employing 26 professionals, more than half who are actually veterans. The Jokim Group supports federal agencies nationwide with expertise in financial management, audit readiness, compliance, and accountability reporting. Curtis' commitment to veterans run deep. He ensures veterans receive priority in hiring, actively mentors them in business and financial management, and has long supported organizations like the Veterans Institute for Procurement, the National Veterans Small Business Coalition, Disabled American Veterans, and the American Legion. His firm also supports therapeutic programs for veterans through the American Veterans Freedom Forum. Beyond his work with veterans, Curtis has led his team in supporting causes locally such as Angels of Assisi's, Family Promise of Greater Roanoke, and Hurricane Recovery efforts across southwest Virginia. Through his leadership, Curtis has shown what it means to be creating impact, building opportunity, empowering others, and strengthening the economic foundation of Virginia's Blue Ridge. I am proud to present Roanoke City Council Curtis Jokim as the Small Business Veteran
Well, thank you, Tom, and the Roanoke Small Business Development Center for this honor, and Mayor Cobb's and the rest of the City Council for allowing me the opportunity to be recognized here today. I want to thank the SBC, the SBA for really making this possible. We're coming up on our 20th year in business, 15 of those here in Roanoke, and we really appreciate the opportunity to be a Roanokean, if I would say that. And thanks again, and all the employees that make this possible. Didn't do this all by myself, so I'm looking forward to another 20 here in Roanoke. Thank you.
You are too. Congratulations to both of you, and thanks again to the Small Business Development Center for all of the great work you do in our city and in our region. Item three on our agenda is the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters, and we set this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as she may deem appropriate. For each speaker today, you'll have three minutes, and if you're new to speaking at city council, when you come up to the podium, the mic is live, so you don't have to worry about that. There's a box in the corner that has a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green means go, yellow means you have one minute left, and red means stop. And if you're wrapping up, I'll work with you to wrap up. But we are grateful that you've taken the time to come and speak to council today, and I'll ask our clerk to call out the first two names, and so that the first person can come up, and then the second will be on the ready.
Our first two speakers, Garnet Garrett Robinson and Sylvia King.
Welcome, Mr. Robinson.
Good afternoon, City Council. As you may have heard, my name is Garrett Robinson. I am a member of Pedal Safe Roanoke, as well as Strong Towns Roanoke, which we loved having Ms. Powers out last week. I am also somebody who just loves riding my bicycle everywhere and really wants to see Roanoke become a place where you can bike anywhere, where you can walk anywhere, and continue to improve to our public transit here in Roanoke. And I'm here today specifically just to ask that we explore options and find a solution to keep the greenway open and usable, specifically as we are doing the construction on the low-water crossing bridge in Smith Park. You know, we are so excited about that project. I know that the end product of that work is going to be a huge improvement to our greenway. However, that section of the greenway is not just a recreational resource and asset, it's also one of my primary means of transportation around the city. I commute every work, every day to work on my bicycle. I get downtown to our local businesses here, taking that route. And I think, you know, from the data that we looked at, it's about 1,100 users per day that ride over that section of the greenway. So it is one of the most heavily trafficked areas, and having that completely shut off for construction would just have a major impact on me personally and a lot of other members of our community. And part of that, too, is that it is by far the most comfortable bicycle infrastructure that we have in the city, the greenway, and study after study shows that... And study after study shows that there is a huge correlation between how comfortable a bicycle infrastructure or pedestrian walkway is and how much it gets used. And so really just want to have some discussions about what we can do while that construction happens, about what possible solutions we could have to make that work for everyone. And part of that, too, is that as somebody who works in residential construction professionally, I know that weather and material delays and everything else, and so I think right now it's potentially going to be a nine-month project, but as somebody who works in construction, I know that can easily go a lot longer. And so that is a sizable amount of time that we would be cutting out a very popular and used section of our greenway. And, you know, my wife and I, we moved here from Austin, Texas about four years ago. We moved here because one of the lightbulb moments was when I saw the master plan of the greenway and said, this city gets it. You know, there are so many folks, and I think increasingly so, who want to live life without a car. I look forward to the day that I can get rid of my car and just bike everywhere. But I think if we want to be a community that truly encourages active transportation, we just need to focus on finding solutions so that we don't need to shut down a, you know, what is probably the biggest artery of active transportation in our community without having a safe and comfortable solution for those users. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Welcome, Ms. King.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb and Vice Mayor McGuire, and all the City Council members. I have two different topics to discuss. Number one is sounding alarm in reference to top-tier solar solution company. I'm standing in the gap for my manager and one of my coworkers, and this particular company is going around scamming people and their opportunists and their predators. And you can look them up on Google and see the complaints that they are receiving. So they are in Roanoke, Virginia, and my manager, she signed a contract, and she lost a lot of money with the solar system. And also, too, she still, when you want this, it's because you want to save money on your heating bill. But come to find out, she's still going to have to have that particular bill, and plus her bill dealing with the solar company. So once again, I'm sounding alarm for top-tier solar solution company, that everybody needs to take heed, because what they're doing, they're going door-to-door and trying to persuade you to sign up. I'm an ex-salesperson to go door-to-door through the United States selling magazines and books, so I know how that can be. So I just want everybody to be aware of that in the city. Second thing I want to talk about is representing Brax. Brax is the bus rider of Roanoke Advocate Group, and our president is Laura Hartman. On behalf of our team, we are here to say Valley Metro is celebrating the 50th Anniversary Celebration. The kickoff is what? It's tomorrow, November 18, Tuesday, at 10:30 a.m. at the first station north at the bus station. We, the people who are riding the bus, we want everybody to come out and let's support the great job that the bus system has done in Valley Metro, okay? Now, I am instructed by my leader, Dr. Hartman, to say these are some of the things that she has a concern about, and that is, number one, the metro flex is doing well, has enough funding so to increase capacity and expand the ridership, because it is doing well. So we need to look at that again, and I personally want to say this about Walmart Valley View Shelters. I'm glad that you all still have that on the table and discussing, because we do want to change to make sure, because winter is coming up, and this winter is supposed to be really bad, so they say. And the last and final thing is that City Council Peter, we were talking about the voters, and we need to expand the bus out to the DMV out in the Peters Creek area over there, because some people cannot get IDs unless, you know, where should they go? So that's another concern. So I thank you all for hearing what we have to say, and, you know, actions speak louder than words. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Good points.
Next two speakers, Barbara Dirk and Dwayne Howard.
Welcome, Ms. Dirk.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Assistant Mayor. I am Barbara Dirk. I am connect now, and I believe that we need to connect our neighborhoods, our communities, and our Commonwealth. I'm here today to talk about bicycle advocacy, that I'm hoping that the Legislative Committee and City Council will support some legislative agendas. The Virginia Bicycling Federation is proposing an omnibus bicycle safety bill for the 2026 Virginia General Assembly. First one is on safety yield, to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section to allow bicycle riders to treat stop signs as yield signs in limited circumstances. Proceed on the walk signal. Amend the code to allow bicycle riders to proceed on a walk signal under limited circumstances. Bicycle signals. Amend the code to require that bicycle riders obey the bicycle signal at intersections controlled by traffic control devices that include a bicycle signal. And riding to a breast. Amend and reenact 46.22905 of the Code of Virginia to clarify ambiguous language and allow bicycle riders to ride to a breast under limited circumstances. There's also a safety yield to improve safety, encourage more people to bike, and enable bicycle enforcement to be allocated to more important work, and there's others that are there, too. That the League of Conservation Voters are proposing two bills to provide monies for trails, and I would encourage you to support the one to DMV and one to the other trail. So support money for trails, because we need to connect. That our greenway system, we find a lot of electric vehicles that are not considered bicycles using our greenway, and there's other communities that are having the same problem, so hopefully we can find the legislation to deal with the use of our greenways by bicycles that look more like mopeds using it. And then, again, support the money for trails. Thank you very much.
Can Ms. Dirk?
I just came back from Ohio and through Chicago, and my seatmate was from Colorado Springs. He was doing a job interview in Bodatack County. And so he was asking me, he said, hmm, where should I live? And then he said, how are the schools? I need good schools for my kids. And then he asked, he said, how's the transit system? And normally, you don't hear about the transit system, but I want you to know that people, when they're looking for living in Roanoke, are asking about transit. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Howard.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor McGuire, and Ms. Turner. I had a list of items that I wanted to talk about southeast, but I'm going to put them aside. And I know a couple of you may be too young to remember a distinguished member of city government by the name of Big Red. That was our former city manager, Darlene Bircham. And during her tenure, we had a city magazine that probably went out quarterly to all the residents of the city. Unfortunately, it was mostly fluff, and I think the city needs to consider such a magazine again that deals with the functions of what is going on in the city, what are the proposals of laws and changes, because our newspaper is almost non-existent anymore. I had 12 pages in the paper the other day, actually four pages worth of news in it. The magazine should go out in place of the magazine that the Parks and Recs, they do a magazine, I believe that goes to every resident in the city. Do away with that expense and do something that is productive to help inform the citizens of what is going on in Roanoke. Just for example, the recent zoning change that affects the entire city, that so few people did not hear about it. And that's something very important, and I hope that you all would look into the value of this. Having just turned 84, I would like to live to see an organization in southeast Roanoke. I'm president emeritus of the former Southeast Action Forum. We really need a neighborhood organization. I brought this to, I believe, your assistant in the city manager's office, that I'd like to see a mail-out to our ZIP code, to every resident, that we're having a meeting at the library. I would be glad to host it, to get a new organization formed. I have no desire to head it or lead it, but certainly I have the experience and knowledge to help get it, an organization, off the ground. We really need this for southeast, and I was told that a mail-out to the city would be about $3,000. Well, I would ask you to consider that amount, and I believe in it so much, I would be willing to contribute to the cost of getting that mail-out, and I hope you would consider this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Howard, and thank you for your willingness to help.
Our next speakers, Nicholas Halk and Ralph Smith. Halk, I'm sorry for the pronunciations. Halk, okay.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, members of the City Council. I've only got three minutes, so I'll keep this brief. I wanted to speak to you guys about a problem only I am having. I recently purchased a house in the city of Roanoke. It is located at 3635 Preakness Court. A lot of you guys are thinking, where is Preakness Court? You actually cannot get to it from a city roadway. It is currently located off of Bell Avenue, where Bell turns to Carson, make a right onto Derby into a neighborhood, and then another right turn onto Preakness Court. The issue is the municipal boundary that was drawn many years ago cuts directly through my property. My driveway is in Roanoke County, my residence is in the city of Roanoke. I'm currently paying both Roanoke City and Roanoke County taxes. I do not receive any services from the city of Roanoke. They don't pick up my trash. If I call 911, the county is coming, and I learned on the fourth that I cannot vote in the city of Roanoke. I have spent multiple hours in the municipal building, talking to the Commissioner of Revenue, our real estate office, trying to come up with a solution, and I've reached out to Roanoke County. I would like Roanoke City to work with Roanoke County in annexing my property to the county. I was initially given a code section which prohibits city municipalities from taking land from counties. I'm not asking for that. I'm simply asking that the two municipalities work together so that I can have this issue resolved. It's extremely cumbersome when it comes to paying taxes, voting. I don't receive anything from the city, but I'm still paying city taxes based on my evaluation of my home. So if there's anything you guys could do to help me out, I'd really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for sharing that very unique reality, and I'm hopeful we can work to resolve that with you. If you could get with either of our deputy city managers right here and make sure to share your information with them.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Smith. The Honorable. Good to see you.
Mayor, members of council, I don't want to be, sound like stuck record, maybe I am, but I'm here in opposition of the idea of a casino. I understand your legislative package has gone out, and you did not include that. I hope I'm correct there. What I would like for you to do is pass a resolution saying that it is not a practical thing for the city of Roanoke. Now, newly elected, both sides of the aisle in our area have both come out and said we don't support a casino. Major employers in this city have said we don't support a casino. So I ask you to just put that one to bed, and let's get on with the many good things we can do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming today.
Next speakers, Nell Boyle and Nelson Harris.
Well, I am sandwiched between two big names. My name is Nell Boyle, and I previously served as the Sustainability Coordinator for the city of Roanoke for 10 years before LeAnn Weizenfeld. And I am here to offer a little historic perspective on how the sustainability initiative in Roanoke started. In 2005, city manager Darlene Bircham was looking for ways to tighten the budget, and she noticed excessively high energy bills. She tapped the Director of General Services, Ken Cronin, to do something about it, and Ken saw the opportunity and started the Energy Efficiency Initiative. Simultaneously, the Roanoke Valley was suffering from poor air quality, primarily from pollution from coal-burning fire plants in West Virginia. The EPA had warned the valley that they were close to becoming an EPA non-attainment zone. This air quality designation would severely and negatively affect the city by curtailing funding for economic development as well as other restrictions. This was a serious threat to the city's economic development. The opportunity to develop a more robust sustainability plan was adopted in order to save money and improve air quality. Roanoke was a leader in energy efficiency strategies in the state of Virginia. Over the course of the last 20 years, it's important to know that the city has saved and continues to save every year hundreds of thousands of dollars in avoided energy costs from work that we've previously performed. The city has experienced a track record of success. Now's the time to take the next steps to continue that progress. Today, you're going to hear about a solar opportunity, as well as energy efficiency that you won't hear about today necessarily, but paired with energy efficiency. These two strategies reduce cost, provide healthy and comfortable working spaces, and keep the air clean for future generations. Listen carefully to the successes and the savings the city schools have created with a similar model. I urge council to reach for low-hanging fruit. There's virtually no downside to municipal solar paired with energy efficiency. We know from experience that this will work, and I suggest that you take the win. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. It's great to see you again. Don't see Reverend Harris here. Let's go on to the next speakers.
Okay, the next two is Rebecca Murphy and Emily Casey.
Welcome, Ms. Murphy.
Sorry. Good afternoon, council. My name is Rebecca Murphy. I am a parent of a student at Roanoke City Schools, and I'm also a board member of the Roanoke City Council of PTAs. The reason I am here speaking today is because I would like to draw attention to the fact that a line item in regards to the reappropriation request by RCPS for the capital funds balance was deleted from the agenda for this meeting today. Why is that? Another issue I would like to see addressed is the disclosing of the amount of the true-up funds to the schools. For those that don't know, true-up funds are the actual surplus amount of tax revenue the city collected. The school gets 40% of the estimated tax revenue, but with our new funding policy, must now apply for any amount... but with our new funding policy must now apply for any amount that was collected over that. These are true-up funds. This information was due on September 30th. The school cannot create a budget without knowing what they have to work with. Transparency is something that this council has emphasized, and I would love to see that now. On a more positive note, I would like to thank Vice Mayor McGuire, Councilman Hagan, and Councilwoman Powers for a meeting with the RCC PTA over the past few weeks. We look forward to our scheduled meetings with Mayor Cobb and Councilman Nash. We hope to hear back from Ms. Sanchez Jones and Mr. Volason to schedule a meeting. These meetings have given us a greater insight on the city government's challenges and perspectives. It has also started an exchange of ideas, hopefully more collaborative, and a hopefully more collaborative relationship between PTA, RCPS, and city council. I think that everyone can agree that there have been errors made on both sides, mostly because in this town, change is hard, and we like to stick to how things have always been. We need to stop sticking to how things have always been and start doing it right. Thank you for your time.
Welcome, Ms. Casey.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. Turner, and staff. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you today. In a recent article of the Roanoke Rambler, we learned that the city of Roanoke agreed to pay a consulting firm, PFM, up to $200,000 to look into the finances of the city and help make projections for the future. PFM has noted that the city gives the school system, quote, "almost double what the state determines as an adequate contribution based on Roanoke's population and socioeconomics", and that the city's school contribution grew from $76.4 million in 2015 to $106.9 million this year. It does not appear that PFM has taken inflation into account. When inflation is considered, the city's contribution to schools has barely increased since 2015. PFM also does not take into account that the needs of our students have drastically changed in the last 10 years. While our enrollment has not changed significantly, we have over 1,100 more English learners than we did 10 years ago. That is a 110% increase. We have 74 more students who have identified as experiencing homelessness, a 28% increase from 2015. We have 385 more students with disabilities, which is a 19% increase from what we had just a decade ago. The increased needs for our students requires more investment from our city to help our children receive the best education they possibly can. The article says the state determines what an adequate contribution to the schools is. However, I cannot imagine that our city is okay with the use of the word adequate as something we should use to describe funding for our schools. We want our children to excel, to have the best education and tools they can possibly have, to prepare them to be ready to leave the school system and contribute to our society. If the adequate funding that is recommended provides what is only good enough or sufficient for our children, will we be satisfied with adequate grades, SOL scores, or graduation rates? I don't think so. Additionally, PFM does not appear to take into account the amount of money the school system pays back to the city each year. As part of the agreement between the 2012 City Council and Roanoke City Public Schools, where Roanoke City would give the schools 40% of actual revenues, the Roanoke City School Board agreed that the schools would take up repaying all debt services on the portion of bonds issued by Roanoke City to fund school improvement projects. It was also agreed that RCPS would reimburse the city for other services, including the school resource officers, municipal audit services, the local Costs of Children's Services Act, stormwater fees, and radio support. All told, for the 2025-2026 school year, those items together are projected to be over $17.5 million, and that comes out of the level of funding for schools that the council approved last year. As council has changed the agreement from 2012, these items should no longer be the responsibility of the schools to pay back to the city. Other school systems in the state do not have to pay their local governments back for those line items. If we want to compare cities and say that Roanoke gives more to schools than is adequate per the state, RCPS should be able to retain and allocate that over $17.5 million. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Casey.
No other speakers.
Thank you all for coming out today to share your perspectives. Item four on our agenda is our consent agenda, and all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of the city council and are enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are included in the consent agenda six requests for closed meeting from the city attorney. One is a personnel matter regarding the city attorney position. Second is personnel matters requiring the discussion involving the annual performance evaluations of council-appointed officers. Three is to discuss possible disposal of publicly-owned property in the central part of the city. So there are two items on that. Another item includes consultation with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter, requiring the provision of legal advice by the city attorney concerning contract obligations involving a city-owned facility. And then lastly, to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter, requiring the provision of legal advice by outside legal counsel involving the legal standards for financing of the schools. And all of these are pursuant to the Code of Virginia as amended. So I'll entertain a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Everybody spoke at once. Councilman Volason and Councilman Hagan, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Volason.
Hi.
Ms. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Hagan.
Hi.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Vice Mayor McGuire.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
And Mayor Cobb.
Hi, and the consent agenda is approved. Move now into our regular agenda. We have no public hearings this afternoon, so we'll move into our petitions and communications. And we're pleased to host a presentation from Secure Solar Futures in Roanoke City Public Schools to share information with regard to potential cost-saving options through a solar power purchase agreement. Thanks to Ms. Boyle for setting that up for us. And Matt McFadden, Director of Business Development, Secure Solar Futures, welcome. And we have some other representatives I know here in the audience from Roanoke City Public Schools. I want to thank Vice Mayor McGuire and Councilmember Nash for sponsoring this presentation, and we're delighted to welcome you, Mr. McFadden. Welcome.
Thank you so very much. Good evening, Mayor Cobb and Vice Mayor McGuire and councilmembers. Also, City Manager Tanner, I believe?
Turner.
Turner, I'm sorry. My name's Matthew McFadden, and I am the Director of Business Development for Secure Solar Futures. With me today is Mr. Jeff Schauer, the Senior Director of Physical Plants for Roanoke City Public Schools, and Tony Smith, CEO and President of Secure Solar Futures. This afternoon, my objective is simply to provide an overview of our company, our background, our areas of expertise, and the services we provide. And really to outline how we can work to create meaningful benefits for both the city of Roanoke and its taxpayers. Following my remarks, Mr. Schauer will share additional insight into our collaboration with Roanoke City Public Schools and the positive outcomes that have came through from that partnership. Just to give you a little background on who we are and how long we've been around. We were started in 2004 as a, believe it or not, an oil trading company. And in 2008, I believe Tony saw the light, as I like to say, pun intended. We've actually installed a ton of different projects. As you see, close to 40 megawatts, a little over that actually now, and around 125 individual projects total. We are a B Corp, so we're very responsible socially and economically with everything that we do with any of our customers. Feel free to reach out to those folks to have any kind of references. Moving on a little bit, you can see some of our selected customers. We primarily work in school districts, as you'll see. Around 70% of our business is school districts, so we have extreme familiarity there. But we've also done quite a bit of business with hospitals, with commercial areas, and things of that nature. So before we get too far into this, I wanted to cover how does this work with solar? So most people don't know what a power purchase agreement is, and I'll kind of hit it from the top really quick. So a power purchase agreement is literally what it says. You're agreeing to purchase the power that the panels produce and nothing more. So when you go through a power purchase agreement, we build the system, we finance it, we own it, we operate it, and we maintain it. Now typically, that's during a 25-year agreement. So that leaves no burden on the city at all to maintain the system, to make sure it's performing correctly, or any of those things. That's all on us. And to be blunt, the coolest part is you don't pay any money down to go solar. If you look at the chart there that I've got on the right, the blue line is what you would be paying for solar. The red line is what you're going to be paying with AEP or your other utility providers. The green shaded area is your savings that you get to keep. So that's a big difference for taxpayers and things of that nature. Through a PPA, we are able to leverage over $45 million and to finance 10 megawatts of solar to Roanoke City Public Schools at no cost to them. The schools are trusting us to install this equipment and save over $60 million and working to educate their students and be a beacon of clean energy and cost savings to all their schools in Virginia. We are the first to do this business model in Virginia, and we did it in 2010. We taught our competitors, and now this is the blueprint for public schools around the Commonwealth to go solar and save hundreds of millions of dollars. Moving on, another thing that we do, and I'm sorry the slide seems to have changed fonts at some point in time, we do roof restoration, and we've done quite a bit of roof restoration for Roanoke City Public Schools. We've done it in West Virginia, we've done it in Maryland, we've done it in southwest Virginia. We've done it all over. We've actually even been approved by the West Virginia School Building Authority to do this in West Virginia. But if you look here in the corner, you can see Orange County Public Schools. That was their roof restoration. And on the side there, you'll see a typical 30-mil EPDM roof membrane in black, and our roof restoration on top in white. Our roof restoration does have a 25-year warranty, just like any Carlisle or Firestone product. And if you're familiar with Prince William County, the school district has 130 schools, and they use this to actually refurbish their schools without tearing off the roof. It's significantly cheaper than what you would actually be looking at for a full rip and replace. This is what we've done in your town, in your city. Here's Patrick Henry High School. On the left, you'll see the before, and on the right, you'll see the after. It turns the roof white. We use dual-sided panels, and it actually generates more energy because of the white roof. And it actually reduces cooling as well. Moving forward, and I'm sorry the slide seems to have gotten messed up between my hands and where we sent it to, but moving forward with a site assessment, we would ask you to select your largest electrical users. Ideally, facilities with around 100,000 square feet of roof or adequate ground space, if you'd like to install a ground-mounted array. All we need to do this is that list of buildings or locations, 12 months of utility bills, and then we'll come back with a comprehensive analysis as we move forward with everything. So that concludes my portion of this. Right now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jeff Schauer, and he'll give you a little bit more information.
Welcome, Mr. Schauer. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, members of city council, and Roanoke City leadership, and along with Roanoke City Public Schools leadership, and all those joining us today in this presentation. And thank you for the opportunity to share how Roanoke City Public Schools is advancing renewable energy. I'm Jeff Schauer, Senior Director of Physical Plants at Roanoke City Public Schools. Our solar initiative is strategic stewardship in action, lowering costs, improving infrastructure, and supporting sustainability for our students and our city. Our success comes from the partnership. Working with a proven solar provider delivers quality design, reliable performance, and financial sustainability with no upfront cost to Roanoke City Public Schools. These projects strengthen roofs, enhance efficiencies, build student career paths, and demonstrate financial and environmental leadership for Roanoke. Phase one, which is complete, includes six sites: Breckenridge, Fallon Park, Fishburne Park, Lucy Addison, Fishwick, and Wemby Robinson, totaling 1.6 megawatts of capacity. The Wemby Robinson Administration Building now offsets 61% of its electricity use, a tangible result of smart investments. All buildings were solar-ready, with no roof restoration required. The existing manufacturer's roof warranty is intact. Phase two, which is under construction currently now, has 5.6 megawatts across 11 sites, including both high schools, our tech center, and several elementary schools. A combination of solar-ready roofs and roof restoration was involved in this process. Patrick Henry alone will offset 41% of its energy uses. Phase three is a work in progress, an additional 2.8 megawatts, comprised of solar-ready roofs, roof restoration, and some ground arrays in this round. The transportation building will offset 97% of its energy use, operating nearly off-grid during the daylight hours. This final phase moves us toward a district-wide energy renewable footprint. In summary, phase one through phase three, together phase one through three, total 10 megawatts of electricity and 780,000 square feet of roof restoration. Over 35 years of net energy savings exceeding $56 million, while avoiding roughly $18 million in roof replacement costs. Strong returns for our students and taxpayers. This effort reflects how the city of Roanoke and Roanoke City Public Schools lead together, leveraging power purchase agreements for financial responsibility, aligning shared climate goals, and building a workforce readiness for the future. We deeply appreciate our partnership with Secure Solar Futures and the city leadership in bringing this vision to life. As we say at Roanoke City Public Schools, we are one. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like Dr. Smith to come to the podium and have a few closing comments.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Matt. Tough act to follow, but fortunately, I don't have slides. I want to thank you, Mayor Cobb, and city council members, and City Manager Turner for inviting us to share a few thoughts about our work with Roanoke City Public Schools. I first met Jeff Schauer more than eight years ago, and that was a few years after we were selected to solarize the Burgland Civic Center. And I very much appreciate, and a shout-out to Nell Boyle for her unflagging efforts to try to make solar happen way in the early days of solar in Virginia. And we're so glad that you're here to witness what you started so many years ago. Jeff Schauer's patience and perseverance have helped to position the city of Roanoke Schools as one of, if not the, leading solar school division in solar in the Commonwealth. The leading solar division in the Commonwealth. And we trust, and the trust we've built, together with Jeff and his team, and supported by your General Counsel, David Collins, has allowed us to turn ideas into real projects. As we look ahead, I'd like to offer a vision for the city. The city has many landmark buildings. I'm told not to emphasize too much about the Civic Center, but that's one of them as Roanoke seeks to become even more tangibly and visibly a model for sustainability and smart economics. If nothing else, it's about smart economics. We believe that the roofs on your landmark buildings in the city, which today represent a liability, could well become generation assets. So you turn a liability into an asset. We also believe that many of your parking lots, which are today urban heat islands, could well become shaded areas and sources of energy, which would also very visibly carry forward as a symbol of sustainability and smart economics. Most importantly, timing. We can achieve this at no capital cost to the city as long as we can do it within the timeframe with a shortened period for enacting the federal tax credits. As you all know, that time has been shortened. We can work with you through the speed of trust to help make those possibilities a reality. We'd be honored to work with you to help foster that vision. We'd be honored to work with you to help foster that vision further. And thank you again for your time, and we would welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for your time today, and I'm going to turn to our sponsors of the presentation, Vice Mayor McGuire and Councilmember Nash, to start us out with questions or comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much, Mr. Smith, Mr. Schauer, Mr. McFadden, for being here. I had the pleasure a couple of weeks ago of going out for a tour on the Robertson Admin Building and then over at PH to check out a couple of the installations, and I just want to say thank you. I'm very proud of your work. It's really remarkable, the sustainability impact, but then I think what is, I hope, I hope will resonate with a lot of my colleagues and drive us to move forward are the smart economics and the amount of money that you are saving. And we are talking a lot about the budget situation that we are in, and I think this presents a really good opportunity for us that I hope my colleagues will consider. And I just wanted to really quickly underline a couple of things that just jump out at me. If phase three is completed, approximately sixty million dollars in savings. And then the other piece that I really appreciate is just that you didn't just throw the solar panels up there, that you have programs, and it's a holistic approach of integrating this in with the schools, there's workforce development opportunities, teaching kids how to install the solar panels, paid internships, training for the teachers to integrate this into their curriculum. So I just think it's really remarkable, and you've really set a model for how it can be done, and I really appreciate your time today, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues for any questions, but just can't say thank you enough.
You know, I just learned recently that Roanoke is within a day's drive of two-thirds of the U.S. population. Just think about Roanoke as the center for sustainability.
The top solar school division in the Commonwealth, I think, is a really remarkable, it's a badge of honor, I think, and I think you're right, that we can build off of that and continue to kind of be a beacon of sustainability and forward-thinking.
I have one statement and one question. My statement is, I appreciate you all's time. I was thankful to be one of the sponsors on this, along with our Vice Mayor. I believe that, you know, you hear citizens complaining about how their electricity bills are going up, going up, AEP is going up. Well, the same thing applies for us. You know, we have to pay electrical bills, just like you have to pay electrical bills to run these cameras that are looking at us, the lights, the microphones, and every single city-owned property that we have, we pay an electricity bill. And so if there's any way we can, number one, save money, but also generate good energy that can go and help power all the various operations that we run, especially as we think about the power needed to put in place electric charging for electric vehicle infrastructure, we have to be thinking proactively and very forward-thinking with taking approaches like this. My question is, I realize that not every building that was, that there was a picture of had the white membrane, UV membrane on it. Is that membrane only applied when a roof is in need of restoration? It is? Okay. Do y'all ever apply that, just to apply it to create the white roof effect to help keep the sun's heat off of the building, or is that?
Sure.
So when we look at an existing roof and we're looking at putting solar on it, if it's got an existing warranty, we typically don't put the white roof on it, simply because it would be a pretty large expense. The whole goal, and one of the things we pioneered with Roanoke City Public Schools, is to actually pay for all the roof restoration with the savings of solar and give even more back. That is our main goal with what we do, is to try to make sure that there is roof savings and new roofs available with warranties that extend beyond what most people can't do. But it would be great if we could put white roofs on everything, because that will generate more energy from the bifacial panels.
I might get a few cans of white paint, we can jump on there. No, but that was my only statement and question. And once again, I just thank you all for coming out, and I appreciate you giving us a little bit of your time.
Just to add to your question, the white roofs reflect ultraviolet radiation, and so they reflect the heat-forming effects of solar irradiation on the roof. So it actually reduces your cooling cost. So whether or not you put solar on that roof, you might always want to spec, you know, a white membrane. It so happens that the white membrane we're using is a polysilicon, so it's impervious to UV degradation. So after the first twenty-five years, that roof membrane will be fairly intact, and it'll be ready to take on another application. So you might get fifty years out of that roof altogether. The other benefit, of course, is that when you put in bifacial panels, and the white membrane roof reflects the light to the underside of the, you get at least a six-percent bump in energy performance. So there are a lot of factors that lead to that direction.
One additional question, I'm sorry. What, so if it's found that a roof's, if a roof needs restoration deeper than just the surface, if it's something with the structure, if it's some type of form or water damage that has leaked into the roof, how do you all approach the actual renovation, not just laying the lining down, but actual renovation of the roof structure?
So we've actually ran into that before, when we were doing one of the schools down in Lee County, just as an example. You guys probably don't know where that is, but that's where I'm from. But basically, we ran into an area on their tech school where they had significant water damage underneath the EPDM membrane that they had. So we actually went in and did remediation, and that was included in the roof restoration cost that we set aside. So we do IR flyovers to basically look for any moisture when we're actually considering doing a roof restoration. We also send out roof representatives from the roofing company that does the restoration to verify that that is a candidate for restoration. There's a lot of checks and balances we go through, but yeah, that's a great question.
Also, we're actually doing that, some of our schools are getting that approach.
Okay.
New roofs, completely new roofs.
Wow. Thank you. Mr. Allison.
Thank you for the presentation this afternoon, almost said this morning. I have a couple of questions. I'm actually, I have a solar on my house, and I'm doing, looking at a power purchase agreement up in DC right now. And so this all sounds very familiar. I really like what y'all did, especially with Patrick Henry, the high albedo roofs to use both sides. That's very, very smart tactic. I wanted to ask about, you said something about the tax credits. What does a timeline look like for tax credits? Like, when would we have to? And do we, as a city, get tax credits? Okay.
Thank you. That's a lot rolled into one. So the tax credits, the window for the tax credits got shortened quite a bit. They have to be used or achieved by December thirty-first, 2027. Given the development time for getting a project designed, engineered, financed, and so forth, you really should plan on an eighteen-month lead time. So realistically, the timeline is to get projects queued up on or before the end of June of this coming year. That's where we believe the speed of trust makes a huge difference. We have incredibly good trust partnerships, not only with the school system, but with city management at many different levels, and that really helps turn challenges into opportunities. It makes a huge difference, and so we feel very fortunate to be in this partnership relationship with the city schools, and we look for, which are in effect Roanoke City facilities, as your General Counsel often likes to remind us. So in effect, we're working with the city and the city schools to make these projects happen.
So that second question of, so what about the tax credits? Because do we actually get those, and does that affect what our payments are or anything like that?
Well, yes. In fact, what we do is we monetize those tax credits and the depreciation to pass along those savings, which Jeff Schauer just mentioned, helps to offset the cost of the roof restoration, and more importantly, the avoided cost of roof replacement, which is very significant. Now, under the new tax bill, the city could seek to get tax credits or a grant in lieu of the tax credits. We would suggest that's a fairly inefficient and cumbersome process, because you don't get the depreciation in addition, and good luck working with the federal agencies and recouping your grants. There's so much turmoil at the federal level that we would caution against that approach.
So my next thing I wanted to bring up was, you know, Councilmember Nash brought up about more serious roofing costs. Now, I'm looking at doing residential, and so I'm not sure if this is exactly the same way that this works, but with residential, you know, they say it's zero dollars for your energy if you don't have to upgrade or fix anything, and then the power purchase agreement can go up to a certain number of cents depending on how much has to be done to the facility. Is that how the power purchase agreement is figured out with a commercial like this as well?
Well, technically, in Virginia, you cannot do a power purchase agreement for residential customer. And as we heard earlier today about this top-tier solar solutions company, there are a lot of scam artists out there. This particular company, I just looked it up, it was based in Charlotte, North Carolina, a lot of complaints with the Better Business Bureau. So there should be a lot of caution, especially with, in the residential solar market, a lot of door-to-door salesmen promising the world. But there are ways to create opportunities for residential solar. In fact, I think the city of Roanoke, didn't you have a solarized program at one point?
Yes.
Yeah, so the city has already, on behalf of its residents, sought the best possible pricing from contractors and has done the due diligence with solar contractors to help residential customers get not just the best price, but a best price from a reputable contractor. So the city of Roanoke was one of the first to offer that in the Commonwealth.
And I'd like to address another part of your question. You talked about the variable rate. We don't do that. It's a locked-in PPA rate with a two-percent escalator, or two-and-a-half, depending on what we see as your financials. You know, as you've seen in the past twenty years, if you look at APCO power rates, you're seeing around three-point-seven year-over-year. I think just this past year, we saw twenty percent, year-and-a-half to two years, or twenty percent with some of the school systems we've been working with. But we don't do that. You get a separate roof cost, and we have a PPA rate, and we'll show our savings versus what we show the roof cost. There's nothing hidden in what we do. It's all very transparent. You're welcome.
The, I guess the final question I have is, goes back to the timeline. Are y'all the only providers of power purchase agreements in Virginia?
No, we're not. But we will say very humbly, we trained our competition. We actually did. We were the first to do power purchase agreements in Virginia in 2010, and for the first six years, we were the only company in Virginia offering this, and every time we make a presentation to a school district, they'd say, why are you the only ones offering this? There must be something, you know, not right. So we decided, together with our bank, to sponsor a training session with what are now our competition, and gave them the secret sauce on how you can do solar PPAs. And we felt the worst that can happen, and what we hoped would happen, was to grow the pie larger. In fact, that's what happened, starting in 2017. After that workshop, the rate of growth of solar projects with schools just was like a hockey stick. And so we don't regret the move we did, but we like to say we trained our competition.
And if you don't mind me jumping in here, I'll say definitely not the only ones that do power purchase agreements, but we're one of the very few, if not the only one, that does roof restoration with power purchase agreements.
Right, that's true.
And that is a big thing with what we do, and we've been doing it longer than anybody else, at least since 2012, I believe.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, sorry, my bad. Too many different numbers, but yes.
I appreciate that, because my, I'm sure you understand what I'm looking at here is, you know, as a public body, we have to go to our taxpayers and looking at what that process would be like to select for this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I've learned a lot. But I do have one question, because right before I came, I had somebody send me a text. They were looking at our consent agenda and saw that this was on there, and they, and I don't know the answer to this, so they wanted to know, how can this city do this? And you say, at no cost. So they wanted to know, because this, these people are putting solar on their house, and she said it's costing her like thirty-some thousand dollars. So she said, does the government get something for free, and we don't? So I don't know. So I said I would ask the question.
Well, we should clarify, at no capital cost, there's a...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
There's no capital cost? In other words, we put, we put up all the money, we finance it, and we take all the performance risk, and then you pay us on a kilowatt-hour basis for the electrons that we provide. And we cannot get financing, and we will not offer a deal to any customer unless we can offer a price lower than you're currently paying your utility company. And so that difference grows over time as utility rates increase, and we have a locked-in guaranteed price for the twenty-five years that your budget administrators can count on.
Mr. Hagan.
So I have a couple of questions. So presumably, all the panels would be bifacial, right? Is that correct?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Any, so what happens if Perovskite ends up taking off and offering significant, more efficient panels? Do you all replace them? What happens in the event that the technology changes fundamentally where it become, you know, in the twenty-five-year span?
We're excited about the potential of Perovskovite. It's, it has a lot of promise, it's still a long way towards being in commercial application. My best guess would be five to ten years before it's commercially available. So you'd want to trade that off. I mean, it might be more efficient, but you already have the sunk costs for labor, engineering, not to mention permitting and procurement and so forth, and it's operating seamlessly. So you wouldn't want to tear off those panels, but if, if we discovered that these new panels were producing so much more energy than the current ones, we would be incentivized to replace them. Yeah.
The other thing is, is, so you all would own the energy system or just the panels?
We would own the entire energy system.
Okay. So batteries and that kind of thing, or?
Yeah, speaking of batteries, that's, do you want to say something about the battery project we're thinking about?
Sure, sure thing. So both of our high schools, as you may recall, are set up as emergency shelters. So we're looking at doing this idea. We've got solar both of our high schools, so we have a battery system for standby emergency power, you know, at our schools, so the resiliency is for a long period of time, as long as the sun is out, the batteries recharge, provide the emergency shelter, and also the battery size is large enough, it could actually, we call it a microgrid. So that's kind of the terms that we're pretty excited about.
Okay. Well, that was the questions I had, so thank you.
Well, you all have asked great questions. I just have one other, having dealt with a property that was not owned by the city for a number of years, that we could never figure out what to do with, because it had so many different pitches to the roof. What, are there any limitations to the type of roof that you all can work on? Are there roofs that you stay away from on some of these, these older buildings, or are you willing to tackle anything?
So essentially, what we like to work with, and this is just being extremely blunt, is flat roofs, slightly angled pitched roofs, or standing seam roofs. Now, standing seam roofs that are angled in multiple different ways, we can do solar on. But if you're looking at a building that has thirteen different angles and thirteen different directions, we're going to take that building, we're going to use our software, and we're going to say, hey, this is where the sun hits from eight AM to whatever time, and this is what it does throughout the year. What's the smartest way to put panels on that roof? Now, we can work with different kinds of... Now, we can work with different kinds of roof. If you have like a tin roof with another project we're going on, I think it's actually called galvanized, we can do galvanized roofing on certain buildings. We go back with a sealer to keep it from actually, you know, having any kind of leaks or anything like that. And that sealer is warranted for the 25 years, just like we talked about before. So, yeah, we can look at, we'll look at most anything.
Except for slate roofs.
Yeah, slate roofs are not.
We don't want to damage any slate.
Right, that's understandable. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you all for your time today. Excellent presentation. Thanks for the update on what's happening with the school roofs. It's exciting to see. We don't often get to see the rooftops, but it's good that you all have this partnership, and hopefully, we can move forward. It sounds like the sooner the better, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And if anybody's up for a tour, we can always do a rooftop tour, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next presentation today is from Downtown Roanoke, Inc., and I'm excited to welcome Tina Workman, Executive Director, and her team to share information with regard to current activities and future initiatives. Tina, welcome. And please feel free to introduce your team.
Will. There you go. Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, members of council, Ms. Turner. My name is Tina Workman. I am President of Downtown Roanoke Incorporated, and I appreciate the time today to talk about my favorite subject, which is our downtown ambassador program. I thought I'd start with maybe talking a little bit about DRI and some of our initiatives, and then turn it over to Will Terry, who's helping me, talk about the program itself. As you know, DRI is a nonprofit organization that oversees the downtown service district, which is from the Hotel Roanoke all the way down to Riverside, and from Third Street, which is just behind Firestone, to Sixth Street. And our mission is to make downtown the preferred place to live, work, and play. We do that with a variety of initiatives. DRI produces 12 major events a year that encourage people to head downtown to shop and dine. We bring over 150,000 visitors annually, and all of our event revenue is reinvested back into our downtown service district. Mr. Nash mentioned earlier the Christmas tree that he saw coming up today. That's part of Dickens of a Christmas, which is happening next month. It's in its 42nd year. It's by far my favorite event, and it is the first three Friday nights in December, and it brings in about 30,000 people into downtown. So it's a big holiday festival. We also are committed to promoting downtown as a regional destination, and we support local businesses through various marketing initiatives. As you can see, our website hit 1 million views last year. We also promote our businesses on various social media platforms. We have a gift card program that is redeemable at 30 different retail restaurant and attractions downtown. We also do a weekly newsletter, which highlights all of the activities per week that are happening downtown. We do a business newsletter to keep our businesses informed of all things city, as well as street closure, as well as areas that they can get involved in and promote themselves. We do Upper Story Office Campaigns, event marketing, and we just started our holiday shopping campaign, because it's the season, and our downtown holiday gift guide, which was pushed out on Friday, which features sale items at most of our retailers downtown. You may know that we also manage the Historic Farmers Market, so we actively recruit new vendors and retain existing vendors to keep that 65-35 ratio of farmer to crafter. Currently, we have 34 vendors and 15 dailies. We have grown our SNAP and EBT program to include a dollar-for-dollar match up to $20 every day. But we also found a sponsor to increase our match to up to $100 on four separate days during the growing season, which is May through September. And we've seen a huge increase in visitors downtown using the Farmers Market. We do recipe cards and shopping tips to help them understand the best way to use the market. And we worked very closely this year with economic development to secure a grant to replace the awnings along the Farmers Market. I hope you guys have seen them. They're beautiful. We love the color, and our vendors are very appreciative. Beautification, just wanted to mention that all the planters and baskets you see downtown are Downtown Roanoke, Inc. We provide them and maintain them. We also partner with the Roanoke Arts Commission and our property owners to do a downtown mural program. Over the last three years, we've done eight of those. I wanted to mention that the newest one is called Bloom Bright, which is on the Hampton Inn and Suites on Church Avenue. I hope you guys have seen it. It's fabulous. Last year, we also completed our downtown pedestrian wayfinding and kiosks by adding two new gateway signs. I hope you've seen those. One of them is on Jefferson as you come from RMH, and the other one, you'll see as you exit the interstate, right there on Williamson Road. We've added tree lights to Market Square and string lights to Century Plaza, and we've also created a beautification grant for all of our downtown businesses. So if they are interested in updating their signage, their awnings, their outdoor furniture, they can apply for this grant. It pays up to $2,000 based on what they're doing. We're very, we do a lot of clean and safe initiatives as well. The downtown trash compactor program, I don't know if you guys are aware, that DRI issues all of those FOBs to new businesses and existing businesses. We do welcome packets for residents and businesses, and we educate folks on how to use the compactor program. We also meet regularly with all city departments, as well as the city police department. We host crime prevention meetings and walks. We support and assist with the trespass bar program, and then we actively engage with the downtown neighborhood watch. I probably spoke a little fast, but I wanted to get to the ambassador program, which is by far, I don't use this word often, but by far, one of the most transformational things that I've been involved in in downtown. We put it in place in 2021, so we're entering into our fourth year, and it has really transformed the look and feel of downtown. And so I wanted to pass this over to Will Terry, who's beside me. He is our operations director for the program, so he can talk a little bit about his team and give you some stats.
Good evening, council, mayor, and city manager. As Tina said, that her favorite part to talk about is downtown program. It is also my favorite to talk about. So I am with Block by Block. We are a company out of Louisville, Kentucky, and with pride, we make public spaces friendly and vibrant for the communities we serve. So downtown, we started off as a four-member team. Now we have eight-member team. I'm sure you've seen our guys in blue. They are an eight-member team, and we work seven days a week and provide over 300 weekly service hours. Those three are broken down, those teams are broken down into three teams. We have a clean team, and their responsibilities are removing litter and debris. We control graffiti and hand removal, mulching, power washing, and biohazards. And as you see below, those are the stats. And I know you've seen us in the blue. Like I said, we are all over the place. That is our phone number. I'm sorry, our phone number as the slide, so if you guys are out and you see anything, please don't hesitate to write that number down and give us a call. If we miss that call, we will surely follow up that we have received that call. We do have a hospitality team that works on the weekends. We try to engage and have fun with the public while they're down here, and answer any questions, provide directions, and restaurant recommendations, that sort of thing. We try to make sure that we go in and talk to the business owners, making sure that they have everything they need, or we can take out their trash, or move people along that's in their doorway. And below, you'll see our stats as well. And then, which is a huge hot topic right now, is our outreach team. Mayor Cobb has been on several outreach walks with us and sees the impact that Havana and our team does on a weekly basis, on a day-to-day basis. We just try to connect the unsheltered community with those service providers, such as the Ram House, Rescue Mission Hat Team, and so forth. So, and those are our stats below. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Tina.
Our annual expense for this program is a little over $570,000 a year. As you can see, it's pretty labor and benefit-driven. This is a great team. We're very pleased that, of our partnerships with the city of Roanoke, with Virginia's Blue Ridge, our foundation, the EDA, as well as our property owners and stakeholders in downtown have contributed significantly to this program, and our goal is to keep it going. I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you, Tina and Will. I'm going to turn to my colleagues. Mr. Wallis?
I would just say thank you for the presentation. I think you do a great job, and I love the ambassador program. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, so thank you very much for this. I've loved seeing the ambassadors come in. I've seen them in other cities and was really grateful to see them come here to Roanoke. One of the questions I have for you, I know the downtown area technically goes down to Riverside.
Mm-hmm.
Does that also where the ambassadors go, or are they more centrally located, just in downtown?
Well, they're zoned out, so what we do is we focus on specific zones and then move throughout. So yes, they will go all the way down Jefferson to Riverside, but sometimes there's not as much for them to do in that area. But yes, we kind of move through those zones.
I was going to ask about homelessness, but I saw that you guys are doing the outreach, and I think that's, I've talked with several businesses downtown in the market area that have been grateful for that. And I know that we're grateful for that as a city, because homelessness is such a big problem, and we really appreciate what you guys are doing. Thanks again for getting this program up and running, because I think it's really made downtown Roanoke an even better destination for tourists.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Just a quick question. Of that $570,000, and thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it, and thank you for all of your work. I think we have a fantastic downtown. Of that 570K, is that, where is the funding source? What are the funding sources for that? Is it all City of Roanoke? How much?
So we are, we are the major funding source, Downtown Roanoke Incorporated, and then we have received ARPA dollars from the city, and then we have gotten several grants, allocations from EDA, and then we have fundraised through our property owners and corporate donations to keep this program going.
Thank you. That's what I was wondering, is if there's a business contribution component, and how that's sort of determined? Like, is it based off of size, or they self-report their profits? Or how do businesses decide how much to contribute?
I think we leave that up to them. And to be honest, it's really been our property owners in downtown who have, you know, coming out of COVID, saw some of the challenges that we saw downtown, and when I pitched this program, their support kind of helped me get it up and running. And so they based it on their desire to contribute.
You anticipate with, I think I heard you say use some ARPA dollars. Are you anticipating needing funding from the city moving forward as some of the federal dollars dry up?
Yes, I will. But I'm also looking for other partners. I do think there is some different partners in the community that will contribute, and so this would be a more collective effort between all of us to keep this program going. Thank you.
Mr. Hagan?
Yeah, so thank you for the presentation. Also, just wanted to say, thank you so much for the downtown ambassador program. The reality is, it's like, I'm a downtown resident. I was a downtown resident before the ambassador program, and obviously, I continue to be a downtown resident. And there is a marked difference in the way our downtown looks and is now. So thank, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Ms. Workman, thank you for the presentation. I would like to know, are all the ambassadors training hospitality as well?
Yes, they are. And all are local from Roanoke.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallis?
One follow-up, and Vice Mayor McGuire's who reminded me of this. I just wanted to get a sense of how that big slide went this summer, because that was to fund the ambassador program, correct?
Yes. It was a fundraiser for the ambassador program. Unfortunately, it didn't do as well as I anticipated. I am not sure if it was the economy, or if people just did not understand what it was, to be honest with you. I had a lot of people stopping in the middle of the street, taking pictures and asking questions, because they've never seen anything like that. I will say that the folks that did participate had a great time. I've gotten lots of emails and letters from children throughout the valley who have never been to a water slide or anything of that nature, and they spent all day there. And so we were really pleased to have it. I'm not sure it's something I will bring back, but it was an effort, of course, to raise additional dollars.
I understand, and I hope, I hope it comes back, because I didn't get to slide, and I saw how Mayor Cobb had a great time, so.
Yeah, we had to drag him on.
Next time I'll be there.
That's great. I could have been there all day.
You could have stayed all day.
I could, it was fun.
It was.
Yeah. Well, thank you all for the questions. I had just a couple of follow-up things. If individuals in the community want to donate to the ambassador program, how can they do that?
They can go to downtownroanoke.org and click on our ambassador page, and there's a link right there for donations.
And is there an opportunity for them to make a one-time gift or a monthly?
Absolutely.
All right, good. Thank you. You all also have been working really hard behind the scenes on a transportation initiative.
Yes.
This is another, I see it as kind of an extension of the outreach work, what the outreach team does, and for any of you that are interested, usually Friday mornings at 9:30, the outreach team meets in front of On the Rise down on the market, and there are a lot of community partners that go along on the walk. It's just to talk with people, find out how they're doing, what they need, connect them with resources. Some of those people are unhoused, some of them are just people visiting the community, but it's all about connection. But one of the things that you all have been working with, along with Ram House and the Rescue Mission, is a transportation initiative, and I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about that?
Sure. After starting this program, I learned a lot about some of the challenges of our unsheltered community, and I learned that transportation is a barrier. And so reaching out to the different programs across this country that are run by Block by Block, I noticed that there was initiative in Pittsburgh that started a unsheltered shuttle that took folks to all the service providers, and it ran seven days a week, in the morning and in the afternoon. And so I reached out and took Will with us, and we talked about if that was something that would work here in Roanoke, if that was a need. And we did hear from a lot of our folks in Elmwood Park and other places that they wanted to be other places that they could get services, but they couldn't get there. Either the bus wasn't running, or they had too many items, or pets, or different things that kind of caused that to be a barrier. And so we got together with a bigger group and talked about how could we do this, Lee Clark, Melissa Woodson, and various others, and we have secured about $60,000 towards that program. It's roughly $100,000 to run a year, so we are raising additional dollars for that. We'd like to launch that by the first of the year, if possible, and evaluate that and see how that works, and if it does help with getting folks where they need to be. And so that's kind of where we are right now. I think that you will see, if you look on Block by Block's page and you look at other communities, that they are doing things like this. And I think this is, again, something that we could try and pilot and see if it works.
Thank you. And the last thing I'll add is, if you get a chance to just have conversation with the ambassadors, they're extraordinary people.
They are.
And they're, they love what they do. And the journey that many of them have made, to a person, when I've talked with them, they've said, one of the reasons we wanted to do this type of work is to give back to our community. And you just see that in how they go about doing their work. So please, again, I know I've had an opportunity to meet with them, but I think even since I met with them, you've had some new additions. So when you're downtown and have an opportunity to spend a little bit of time with them, I encourage you to do so. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Item seven is reports of city officers and the city manager. We don't have any briefings this afternoon, but we do have a number of We don't have any briefings this afternoon, but we do have a number of items recommended for action. Item A is the Acceptance and Appropriation of Regional Fire Service Training Facilities Grant. We have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Hagan and Sanchez Jones. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An Ordinance Authorizing Acceptance of the Virginia Department of Fire Program's Regional Fire Service Training Facilities Grant, made to the City of Roanoke, authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city, appropriating funds detailed more fully infra, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The Roanoke Fire EMS Department was awarded a Regional Fire Facilities Grant to support the purchase of a fire flashover simulator. This simulator will support the etching, I'm sorry, will support the, I guess, the reaching of fire behavior and the dangers of the fire flashover. This is a regional grant and will be available to fire departments within our region. The grant total is 92,000, or that's the total of the amount. We have to provide a 25% match. 75% of it is coming from the grant itself. So, we have about 16,000 that's coming from contingency fund, and another 7,000 coming from the aid locality fund, so.
And I see Chief Hope back here today. That work that this grant's going to help do sounds complex, but also very important. Do you mind sharing a little bit more about it?
Yes, sir. Teaching our, and we have a very young workforce right now, and for us to be able to challenge and train our young workforce on the dangers of fire behavior. This simulator will allow us to create flashovers that they would be exposed to in real fires, and how to react, how to acknowledge, how to predict those flashovers when they occur, what to do. It's all contained in what would be a Connex box, and it's very controlled environment, so that we can create those flashovers, they can see what they do, how they're produced, what gases they create, and then how to manage them. So, this is a really great training tool for us to use, not only for our department, but for Roanoke County, Salem, Franklin, whoever else wishes to use it.
Any questions or discussion from council? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Volleson, Ms. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Hagan.
Hi.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Vice Mayor McGuire.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
And Mayor Cobb.
Hi, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you all. Item B is the Virginia Department of Transportation funding for Tinker Creek Greenway. We have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Volleson and Powers. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the reallocation and acceptance of funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation to complete remaining segments of the Tinker Creek Greenway, authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city, appropriating funds detailed more fully infra, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
Thank you. The city completed construction of the Tinker Creek Greenway from 13th Street to Mason's Mill in the fall of 2024, leaving a balance of unspent Virginia Department of Transportation funds. Because the remaining funds were insufficient to design and construct the next 1.3-mile segment, the city requested, and VDOT approved, reallocating the balance to complete a half-mile section from Wise Avenue to Norfolk Avenue. This action reconciles the city's financial records to reflect the approved VDOT funding contributions, and establishes a new project account for the next phase of the greenway.
Any questions or discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, let's call the roll.
Mr. Volleson.
Hi.
Ms. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Hagan.
Hi.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Hi.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
Mayor Cobb.
Hi, and the ordinance is adopted. Item C is the Virginia Department of Transportation Urban Construction Program Reconciliation. We have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
I'll move the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Powers and Volleson. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of refunds from the Virginia Department of Transportation for seven completed urban projects requiring financial reconciliation and providing additional local contributions, authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city, appropriating funds detailed more fully infra, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
As part of VDOT's efforts to reconcile its accounts, the agency has identified completed projects requiring financial adjustment. The reconciliation result in a net refund of approximately 25,000 to the city, and requires corresponding budget adjustments to reflect the final funding balances.
Comments? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Volleson.
Hi.
Ms. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Hagan.
Hi.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
And Mayor Cobb.
Hi, and the ordinance is adopted. Item D is the Acceptance of State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Consent Agreement for a Data Protection System for the City of Roanoke Technologies. We have one measure, a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion and second. Move the resolution?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Volleson and Powers. And Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution to accept the state and local cyber security grant program for a data protection system between the Commonwealth of Virginia and the City of Roanoke, receiving services in lieu of direct funding, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the local consent agreement, and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute such other documents, and to take such further actions as may be necessary to implement, administer, and enforce such agreement.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
No comments.
All right. Any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Volleson.
Hi.
Ms. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Hagan.
Hi.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
And Mayor Cobb.
Hi, and the resolution is adopted. Item E is the Acceptance and Appropriation of Operation Funds for the Greater Roanoke and New River Valley Small Business Development Center 2026. We have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
I'll move the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Powers and Nash. And Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of operation funds for the calendar year 2026 Greater Roanoke and New River Valley Small Business Development Center award issued by George Mason University from the United States Small Business Administration to the City of Roanoke, appropriating calendar year 2026 grant funds detailed more fully infra, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute any necessary documents necessary to accept such funds, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. Ms. Turner, anything to add?
Yes, thank you. These funds will cover salaries, benefits, and operating expenses for the Small Business Development Center from January through December.
And we have the award-winning Heather Fay still with us. Anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, Councilmembers, and Ms. Turner. We are, our funds run on a calendar year. Federal government is finally back open, so we are awaiting our agreement, but this is in preparation of, January is coming quickly, so we wanted to go ahead and get our budget in order. This is the budget that was submitted to, the Virginia Small Business Development Center was submitted to the SBA prior to the federal shutdown. So, as soon as we have our other paperwork, we'll be back to see you all again.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to offer any questions that I can answer.
Any follow-up questions? Comments? All right, Madam Clerk.
Thank you for being our host.
Glad to. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Volleson.
Hi.
Ms. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Hagan.
Hi.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Hi.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
Mayor Cobb.
Hi, and the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Item F is the approval of an historical marker to recognize the contributions of Junius Blair Fishburne in the Roanoke community. And if you know anything about the history of Roanoke, and how it has come to be, you might recognize this name. We do have a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion and second. Move the resolution?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Hagan and Sanchez Jones. And Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution acknowledging the Virginia Department of Historic Resources will submit an application to the City of Roanoke for the Historic Marker Program to recognize the historic contribution of Junius Blair Fishburne, and requests that the city manager or designee provide a letter indicating approval to place the historic marker within the property owned by the city, previously owned by Mr. Fishburne, and commit a perpetual maintenance at the marker location.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
If you'd allow, I'd like to turn it over to DCM Roman.
All right, welcome, Deputy City Manager Roman, and I know, I also see Reverend Harris in the.
Yes, I see him, and I would also like to invite him, there he is, come on up. Certainly, I can share a lot about Mr. Fishburne, but being that Mr. Harris has submitted, or will be submitting, the historic application, I certainly yield my time to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's always a pleasure to come before you on these matters of a historic marker application, and this one, as has already been stated, is for Mr. Fishburne. One of the things that I would add, that maybe you don't know, and probably a lot of Roanoker's don't know, is Mr. Fishburne is personally responsible for eight of our city parks. He contributed the land for those, most notably, Mill Mountain. And so, this marker focuses upon his conservation efforts. Not only did he contribute land for eight of our parks, but he also contributed in its entirety the land that is now Ferrystone State Park for the Commonwealth of Virginia, and he also donated over 2,500 acres to Virginia Tech. So, this marker will be placed, if it is approved, there at Mountain View, our recreation center, which, of course, was his home, that he bequeathed to the city in 1954. Let me just say that it's always a pleasure and a privilege to apply for these markers, to be the applicant for them, and one of the great pleasures that I have is working with the city staff in making these applications. And so, I would express my gratitude to Ms. Turner and Mr. Roman in the city manager's office, as well as Dwayne Nelms at the traffic department. I have to work closely with him, and in this particular case, then with folks at the Parks and Recreation Department in the sighting of the marker. Just remind everybody that just because an application is made does not mean that the marker will actually come to reality. The State Department of Historic Resources only approves about five or six markers per quarter for the entire Commonwealth, and so, it is a competitive process. But I try not to make an application that I don't think checks the boxes. So, I believe this one does for Mr. Fishburne. And another benefit is, by having this marker at Mountain View, it will actually contextualize Mountain View, the home itself, in telling the story of the gentleman who lived there and who bequeathed it to the City of Roanoke. So, with that said, again, it's my pleasure to be here. One quick addition, we have two markers coming to us. The marker for Lucy Addison will be unveiled the middle of next month, and so, you'll be hearing about that. And the marker for Dr. Gill will be coming, hopefully, in the spring, and so, you'll be hearing about that as well. Other than that, I'm here to respond to any questions and express my appreciation to you and to city staff for all the support that you give me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Powers?
I just want to say thank you for everything you do for our city, and this is so well-deserved to happen, and I just want to thank you for the work that you've put in to make this happen, and we've all got our fingers crossed.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, Nelson, how many of these have you helped bring to fruition in Roanoke?
I think probably this would be, in the City of Roanoke, this would probably be the 10th or 11th marker, and I would add that the markers cost about $3,400. A lot of people think, because it's a state historic marker, that the Commonwealth of Virginia pays for it. They do not, and so, one must then raise private funds to pay for the marker. This one will be paid for, if it is approved, by members of the Fishburne family, as well as the Friends of Mountain View organization. So, my appreciation to them for their support as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Volleson.
Hi.
Ms. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Hagan.
Hi.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Hi.
Mr. Nash.
Hi.
And Mayor Cobb.
Hi, and the resolution's adopted.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Now, I'll turn to our city manager, Ms. Turner, for her comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and members of council. I have three comments for this afternoon. First, I'd like to remind city council that Valley Metro is celebrating 50 years of service to Roanoke Valley with a community event at Third Street Station on tomorrow, Tuesday, November 18th, at 10:30 a.m. The celebration will highlight Valley Metro's half-century of providing safe, reliable, and affordable transportation since 1975. Valley Metro will also showcase key advancements in transit, including the VMGO Real-Time App for route and arrival updates, Roanoke's first electric bus, supporting a cleaner fleet, and ongoing work in accessibility and rider education, including a new Riding the Bus information video. This celebration is both a reflection of the past and a look ahead to a smarter, more sustainable, and more connected future for public transportation in the region. Comment number two, I'm excited to announce that the city's holiday tree, you've heard about earlier today, is being delivered today. Urban forestry staff have coordinated with the Roanoke Police Department to provide an escort into downtown, and Fleet Services has arranged for the rental of a crane to safely position and secure the tree. The tree, which is a 25-feet fraser fir from West Jefferson, North Carolina, will be decorated by facility staff once installation is complete. The annual tree lighting ceremony is scheduled for Friday, December 5th. And my final comment is, following the budget retreat on Saturday, city staff is seeking your guidance on the most appropriate approach for proceeding with external agency application. The staff is prepared to share the application at your discretion, and will conduct an information session on Friday, November 21st, 2025, at 1:00 p.m., and a subsequent session is scheduled for December 5th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. Those complete my comments.
Thank you very much, and thanks for setting aside those times to meet with us. All right, we don't have any report from our city attorney, although I'm pleased to welcome Deputy City Attorney Laura Carini with us today. Thank you for being here. You've been very quiet over there today. That's a good thing, right?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
And we do want to do, I always forget this, I always jump over this, and then I do that to see if Mr. Volleson's going to catch me, because usually he does. The Public Matters follow-up.
And it'll be done by Ms. Ferguson today.
Okay, great. Welcome. And I believe, council, we have the report on our, in front of us.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor, Ms. Turner. I'm filling in for Katie today, and so, I believe you have the report in front of you. We'll start out with Fair Free Day. Tuesday, November 4th, was Fair Free Day for Valley Metro due to Election Day. On Election Day, there were 5,663 borders across the entire system. The previous Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, there were 4,670 borders. On November 4th, 2024, there were 5,249 borders. This shows an increase in nearly 1,000 borders on Fair Free Day. Brandon Avenue, Greater Dailly Traffic Report. Adam Mustringo, President of the Greater Dailly Neighborhood Association, and Gary Stein, both share concerns about increasing traffic along Brandon Avenue Stein both share concerns about increasing traffic along Brandon Avenue and Dyerly Road due to new townhomes and the construction of a hotel in the area. I.N. Coffey, the city's traffic engineer, shared data from several streets and intersections in this area. While the neighborhood may see a slight increase in traffic volume, Brandon Avenue currently has the capacity to absorb more input due to its five-lane cross-section. Any additional traffic signals from cross-streets would only formalize delays experienced during peak hours. And you have a copy of I.N. Coffey's full report attached to your report today. And then finally, we have the public apology. Jordan Bell shared recommendations for the urban renewal apology, which were received in writing and passed on to the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. And that ends the report. Thank you.
Next item is reports of committees, and this is a time for the council members who are liaisons on certain authorities, boards, or committees to share any reports. Do we have any? Well, Councilmember Sanchez Jones and I are members of the Greater Roanoke Transit Company Board, and we met earlier today. You've already heard about the 50th Anniversary Celebration, which is tomorrow at 10:30. We, the TPAC, Transit Passenger Advisory Council, we restructured that a bit, and they have now elected officers. And those officers were elected at their November meeting last week. We had some discussion about snow removal, and when the piles of snow end up on corners, how to navigate that and report that. So we're spending a little bit of time looking at that. Ridership is generally up across the board, and we're grateful for that. And Metroflex is so, being so well-received right now, that it has reached its capacity on Sundays. So we're now starting to track the calls that, when we have to deny someone service on Sunday, we're finding that on Sunday service, a lot of people are pre-scheduling those days in advance, which is designed to do that, as well as on-demand, but it's limiting the on-demand for that day. So as we are able to analyze that a little more clearly, we'll have a better idea of to what extent we can expand that service, whether it's adding more vehicles to provide service, or looking at additional hours. But right now, on Sunday, it's from 9:00 to 6:00. So I just want to reiterate, for about 40 years, we didn't have any kind of Sunday transit service. And since we've introduced this and piloted this, it's been overwhelmingly received. So we're excited about that. Right, we have no unfinished business. Our introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Under item 11, we have a council member initiative, and Evan Springs Development Plan. I'm going to turn to Councilmember Nash to introduce that for us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So over the past few months, I've been working very collaboratively with my colleagues on council, which I'm very thankful for, because each of them have given time, whether it's grabbing coffee before work in the morning, or grabbing lunch in the middle of the day, or dinner in the evening. Each of them have made time to sit and talk with me about the Evan Springs CMI. And I've been even more honored to sit with city staff and Ms. Turner and share my thoughts and my opinions about the current plan and some suggestions on what I would like them to look at coming out of this CMI. And I feel that we have a, and I actually wrote notes down, because normally I'm just kind of off the cuff with it, but I wanted to really stay on track, because I feel like this is very important. We're talking about the review and the updating of a development plan that is going to shape a quadrant of the city forever. And that is something that we cannot take lightly. And I'm just, like I said, very appreciative for the support that I've had going into this. And I am confident in our city staff and in my colleagues on council that what we produce will be something that truly, 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 number one, benefits those that live around the Evan Springs area, benefits the owners of the partials, but also is a benefit to the city at large, right? I want to make sure that everyone gets a slice of the pie and everyone reaps the rewards without any, or as limited amount of consequences as possible. And that is all my comment, but if any of my colleagues have anything they would like to say or add, please feel free to do so.
Thank you, Councilman Nash. Comments? Mr. Volason?
Thank you, Mr. Nash, for bringing this initiative up. You know, I think that Evan Springs is absolutely a very important part of our city, and I like the process that you have done so far to get everybody on board. And I do believe that there are some changes that we can make to Bay A that would make it more sustainable over the long term, and more economically friendly, other than just a single use there. And so I look forward to discussing this more with you and the city manager, and hopefully we can come up with that perfect plan that we can put out there and get out to the public.
Mr. Volason? Well, I'll just add, I appreciate your work on this. I think, I appreciate the work that's occurred over the last couple of years related to this, not only from city staff, but particularly from neighbors and citizens and consultants. And I think we've got a really great framework, and it's an opportunity for us to update that and see where we are holistically. And appreciate Ms. Turner's willingness to work with us, to bring updates back to us and how we can move forward with strengthening it even more. So I think you have our consensus to move forward.
Yeah, I'll bring back, kind of package up what it would look like, and how long we think it may take, and any costs associated with it.
Thank you. All right. I think we have gotten through everything for our 2 o'clock session. We will stand in recess for a series of closed meetings, and thereafter reconvene this evening at 7:00 p.m. in the council chamber. I will say that tonight at 6 o'clock begins a series of artist talks as part of the Pilgrims at Tinker Creek Art Exhibit on this floor. Over the next year, we'll be featuring four or five different artists that have work in this exhibit, so it's an opportunity to meet them, to hear more specifically about what inspired them to create this piece of work. So if you're able to come back tonight, or for those watching, that starts at 6 o'clock right up here in the art exhibit. So we're in recess until 7:00 tonight.